Good evening, everybody. We're doing things a little bit different tonight. Court ran a little bit long today. And we're not set up with our microphones or anything like that. So fortunately, I have a big mouth, so you'll probably be able to hear me. We always proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer. The place is legible. If you'd like, please feel free to join in. Father in heaven, we bow humbly to your presence.
... certified by the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, copy this meeting order. Mrs. Isby had a family problem she was taking care of, Mr. Jones. She's got a hospital back there. So this is the group we have tonight, and we have enough for a course. Mr. Garrett, call over.
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
First quarter of business. We have approval of monthly financials ending May 31st, 2019. It doesn't work either. Oh. Turn it on.
If y'all remember last month, I told you this month was gonna look a lot better. And unless you look at just the first half, I wasn't telling you. Five to ten. We didn't get our property tax there. You see, I had blown a little billion dollars in the month of May. But May was also a repay period month, and it's so. That's why you see that bottom line, our net, still showing net expense for the year. And that's the reason why. Sales tax is up four percent. Back, pretty much flat for the year. We're down, if you can get specific, we're down a quarter of a percent. So it's not that flat, I think. And we should get G numbers in the day now. Hopefully, maybe it was second month in a row. Could have been an up after three down. So hopefully, we can continue to level out, hopefully, trend forward, trend upward. Other than that, I don't really have any big things to talk about, so I'll just be happy to answer any questions.
Motion of second to approve monthly financial report ending May 31st, 2019. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And counsel, y'all, I'd like to ask that we move out of B-12. Concomitant Corporation have another meeting they need to attend to.
Come in.
Thank you. We have motion second to suspend rules in Concomitant Corporation. This is ordinance to amend ordinance O-8511. Allow water services. If you stand outside and see them, some Conway, if it is in the file water plant.
So this ordinance is a result of the planning department's annexation analysis. We had been working, us and Transportation and Concomitant Corporation and Chuck, Sue, and Turner, have been working together to look at some of the policies relating to this. So this ordinance change is the result of that. The effect of the ordinance is, is that Concomitant Corporation would be permitted to serve areas with water utilities, a water plant outside of the city limits. We're working on internally, in terms of policies, where planning departments would have planning review on those areas that are where that water service can be provided. Additionally, allows for, in extraordinary circumstances, people of Concomitant Corporation to provide service areas. Examples of that might be in a situation where, for example, maybe there's an area that has safety muffler issue as a result of that. It would prove us as residents of the city that from impact and all. So this is a, essentially, policy change that would affect the industry.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Motion of second, wait for reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second. Motion of second to adopt the ordinance. What's your ordinance number?
O-1955.
Need an emergency clause on this?
Further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Counsel, before we proceed, you should have received copies of the May 28th, 2019, City Council minutes. I think it was back in my notes. Are there any corrections?
Motion.
We have motion second to approve the, uh, council, May 28th, 2019. All in favor, say aye. Definitely a public hearing. The first public hearing. Is an ordinance to close the, uh, port of Factory Street, right away between Mill and Garland Street. We now open this public hearing. Anyone speaks for or against this, would please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. My name is Brad Higginman. I'm the chief operating officer in Apples Construction. I'm here to speak in favor of closing Factory Street between Mill. You know, this is our 70th year in operation, and for 68 of those 70 years, we've been in this area. And so we decided about four or five years ago, what we're gonna do long-term, from a master plan standpoint, are we gonna continue to make an investment in our original campus, or are we gonna look somewhere else and completely relocate? We made a decision that we wanted to continue. So over the past two, three and a half years, we've invested about a little over $2 million in our current facilities. And in 2015, we were fortunate enough to be able to acquire the National Home Center Department. That causes us to step back and look at what can we do to make this also meet the growing demands that we have for our wellness clinic, our mill shop, our industrial service group, and our equipment operations. And so what I've got, if you don't mind, I'm not sure how well you can see this, and I can approach whoever, if we need to be in more detail. But everything that you see outlined here is our current campus, including the National Home Center Department. These are the two buildings that we've invested about $2.1 million in over the last two and a half, three years for upgrades, as we continue to grow and also accommodate new services. So our proposal, this is Mill Street, this is Garland, is to close this section of Factory Street. And what that would allow us to do by abandoning those right-ofways and gaining that street is, is actually better utilize this property and close the campus and truly make it a campus-type office atmosphere. Long-term plans are, if we continue to grow and continue to add services, is to immediately build, in the next few years, a large equipment facility, which is currently located right here. We would put in on the north end of that property. That would allow us to expand the wellness clinic, the mill shop, move industrial service and so forth. We also think it's a safety issue, because right now, we're moving equipment, large cranes, backhoes, gradals, and other large pieces of equipment, as well as some of our clients' machinery that we store back and forth across this street. We don't get a lot of vehicle or pedestrian traffic, but there are some, and we wanna make sure we eliminate any of that. A long-term plan would be, on the south end of this property, is to build another office So that's the general idea that we talked about with Fire Department earlier. Their concern was the access to the fire hydrants here on the north end. The fencing that we will put and the gates will not have any impact on that. That was to be accessible from the outside of our property, so it won't have any impact on their access to the particular fire hydrant. That's a real general overview of what our long-term bills are. Would be happy to answer any questions, but certainly here to ask respectfully your approval for this.
I wanna do a shout-out to Apples, because they reached out to people in the neighborhood. They had a meeting with all the questions and concerns that they had.
What else I can speak for or against this road closure? Public hearing is closed at this time. Mr. Director of Counsel.
I'd make a motion to waive the three. Oh, I'd motion to waive the three.
That's Mary's turn. I'll say it, Mary's.
We have motion second, wait for three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, I'll make a motion to approve the closure.
Motion of second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
O-1956. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye. Thank you very much.
We have another public hearing. Orders to discuss vacating all of the Audubon Place right-ofway adjacent to and abandoned lots, 1 through 3, 4A, 5A, 6 through 7 of Audubon Place subdivision.
I'd make a motion to waive the three readings.
Yeah. Public hearing.
Nope.
Okay.
My bad.
Did wait.
All right. This public hearing is now open for the vacating all of these lots on Audubon Place. Again, if you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, uh, City Council members. My name is Scott Robyn. I'm at 5:30, Audubon Place. All letters of concurrence. You should have those. They're from Center Point. The table will be placed with two, there are two boxes right now that are at the entrance. Some of you may know, it makes a view shade. So there will be a turnaround. They designed it. That's the only thing they designed right there whenever they put that. But it will be back. There will be a fire box, a fireman. There will also be an iPad-type setting.
Mark and I, we've been talking about if, if the city will maintain that now, if they abandon the right-ofway.
No, shouldn't.
The street is so, they're all.
I can answer. We know we're gonna have to take care of the street. We're aware of that. There's no more lots there. There's no more buildings. We're aware, we'll repay it if we have to. The only thing, I think, behind Conway, we're about got, they want us to take care of the life of the lot for some reason. But we're aware.
Okay.
Take care of everything underground, still has the possibility of the city and Conway. But as far as the, the only thing is the street and the life picture that we're made aware of. Any other questions? I'll do my best.
Would anyone else speak for or against, uh, vacating these lots at Audubon Place? Public hearing is closed.
Make a motion to waive the three.
We have motion second, wait for reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second. We have motion second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
O-1957. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six to zero.
Thanks, guys. Next up, we have Community Development, according to the agenda, Mr. Hawkins. This is you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is consideration to dispose of inventory for the finance department. We've got a vehicle that's currently running its course, and, uh, would you like to tell us about that, Mr. Whinneyham?
Uh, disposal of this printer needs to be done regardless, just 'cause the age, we haven't used it in since 2010, 2009. Uh, it's, it's time, especially it's time now with Luke coming up, because we heard we don't want to haul that thing down to 1111 later.
I'd make a motion to approve the disposal of the printer.
We have motion second to approve the request to dispose of inventory for finance department. Any further discussion? So there's no vehicle involved?
That's Miss Print.
That's what we said.
Now, it is about the size of this coffee, and we went to drop with Pushy.
It's got wheels.
Got wheels.
I've got printer on mine way down here. I've got printer on mine. On one of them. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Hawkins? Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to approve entering into the professional services agreement for improvements at the Conway Municipal Airport. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance O-1958.
Good evening. This is the policy for this FAA grant, as recommended, the federal guidelines recommend that we bring this before you and you approve the work order for cargo engineering.
Make a motion, we raise the three readings.
Second. We have motion second to read for three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to approve the ABC permits submitted of Whole Hog Cafe at 150 East Oak Street in Conway. This was, um, so they had one before. Didn't Whole Hog used to have one? Okay. That, that's what I thought, and then gave it up anyway. We have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance O-1959.
Raise the three readings.
We have motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have motion second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is ordinance to approve the ABC permits submitted of Verona Italian Restaurant at 190 Skyline Drive in Conway. And, uh, we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance O-1960.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have motion second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have motion second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Six to zero. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to approve the ABC permits submitted of local Patio and Grill at 910 Front Street in Conway. And we have an ordinance for this item. It's ordinance O-1961.
Make a motion twice for readings.
Second.
We have a motion of second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second. We have a motion of second to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion?
Is this the old name? Hmm? It seems, I don't know. Very excited.
Could we ask a question?
Sure.
You wanna know what you're concerned about?
One of y'all will be open. We just waiting for that permit. Between July 15th to 20th, you know, so. Yeah. We let, we let you know, guys. We come to this somehow, then.
Good. Thank y'all very much.
No, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is resolution requesting the Faulkner County Tax collect to place some liens on property at various locations for expenses incurred by the city. The first location is 429 Angus Street. Is there an owner or representative of an owner at 429 Angus Street with us tonight? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone with us. Resolution, are we gonna do all of these at once? We can. Can we do that? Okay, very good. The second location is at 1363 Mitchell Street. Is there owner or representative of an owner from 1363 Mitchell Street with us?
They're paid.
They pay?
No.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So Mitchell Street is off to pay. Next location is 1364 Bruce Street. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from 1364 Bruce Street? Don't see anyone, Mr. Mayor, so we will move on to the next location. And it's number one, Morning Side Drive. An owner or representative of an owner at number one, Morning Side Drive. Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone for that one. And also 66 Briarwood Circle. Is there an owner or representative of an owner of 66 Briarwood Circle with us? Mr. Mayor, I don't see representatives from any of those locations. The Angus Street was $450.46. The Bruce Street location was $227.53. The Morning Side Drive location was $196.33. And the 66 Briarwood Circle location was $172.11. Resolution is resolution R-1920.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. For this resolution, these properties. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins, does this need to be separate resolution for each property? Okay, so it'll be resolution R-1920 to R-1923. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Six to zero. All right, the next item, Mr. Hawkins and Mr. Benson, is asking for the number seven.
Mr. Clausen has something.
Mr.?
Answer.
All right, go ahead, sir. I got the other. His answer was kind of lumped together. I wanna be sure, I got the resolution number with the proxy. R-1920, is attached to which property? Twenty is to the Briarwood, uh, Angus.
Ledbetter, Mike.
Angus.
Twenty-nine will be Bruce. Twenty-two will be Morning Side. Twenty-three will be Briarwood.
Briarwood. Thank you very much. Good sir. Seven is to Paul. Okay. I have a big seven. Four you can say.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm expecting that July 15th.
Seven to Paul. So the next item, then, would be a resolution to support City of Conway to utilize federal aid transportation alternative program funds for the Hart Rider Street sidewalk improvement district. There's gotta be an acronym for that. David? I'm sorry?
It's the Federal TAP grant, so it's hard to call it.
See, I told you.
And I do apologize to you. I, I tried to put the amounts of these on there, and I did not on this one. So the total grant is $282, $956, local match of $70,000.
Does that $282 include the $70, or that's an addition?
Definitely an addition.
So there'd be $352. We have resolution to read for this. It's resolution R-1924.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have motion second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Hawkins? Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve submitted of a hazard mitigation grant notice of intent for the Box Culvert project under Tyler Street for the Transportation Department. When I see Box Culverts, I usually see Mr. Benson. Here you go.
I'll take it.
Oh. Jamie, are you gonna take that one?
It's a team thing.
This is a grant project.
On the top row?
This is a, uh, this is the Tyler Street Bridge at Tucker Creek. And, uh, we, this is part of the, uh, this is part of the, uh, notified us of the potential of getting a grant project, 50/50 grant project for a bridge or drainage structure. And so we're going for this one. It's already a needed replacement.
I'd make a motion to waive the three readings. What, I guess one? What kind of action do you need to start on this? Just to approve?
Approve submitted. Approve submitted.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Second, approve submitted. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins? Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funding and approving the purchase of an easement located on Van Rocco in downtown Conway. And Vincent, you into this?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Thank you. This is a little bit minimalized. As you all know, we started construction of Van Rocco Street, reconstruction of Van Rocco Street some months ago. And we're not planning to reconstruct the Box Culvert underneath Van Rocco anyway. But when we dug up the street, we found that the, the new Box Culvert, portion of the Box Culvert is new underneath the street. But we knew there was an old Box Culvert, very old Box Culvert that went underneath the building. And that extended much further into the street than we thought. So we excavated that and found, what we found was a, about a 90-year-old stack block, uh, stack block wall, uh, Box Culvert. And running construction equipment over that made us pretty nervous. At the same time, we learned from the downtown partnership that the person that owns the building that the Box Culvert goes under, uh, was planning on rebuilding the building immediately next to this. And so was gonna tear it down.
Three thousand square feet.
Yeah, that would be.
And we had a appraisal down on that property.
We did, and the appraisal came in about double what we were, what we negotiated to.
Cool, okay. Looked like a big number till you said that.
There's, there's a building line, there's a functioning building, and, you know, with a tenant, and it.
Sergeant Wilson, here's the property.
Oh, there we go.
I thought you were waiting to arrest.
It's my building, I own both from Quattle Bombs all the way down to the shoe store, and so we're going to tear down those, and then I'm going to rebuild the Quattle Bombs as a little nicer building. But I've been waiting on this, so we can get this over. Yeah, I just wanted, yeah, he's been wonderful to work with, and I'd like to thank him for this.
And, uh, next item is an ordinance approving bid and appropriating funds for the Tyler Street improvements for the Transportation Department, and this is more than seven feet or deeper, so I'm going to let you talk about this.
Thank you, we would like you to approve the lowest bid for Tyler Street on the face two from Gatlin Park to Washington.
Who's your bidder?
Rogers. You can see, we only received one bid, um, I had a pretty big vendor's list for that, so, um, we, but we only received one bid, and it came in under the engineer's estimate, so we, we didn't have confidence in the bid, only, even though there was only one. I make a motion to raise the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion of second, we need the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption and the emergency clause, it's right here.
We have a motion of second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yeah.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Emergency clause?
Mr. Pruitt. Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt.
Yes.
Six to zero.
How big is this ride away? Um, it goes almost from building, oh, you mean the box culvert.
It's about what we just spent twenty thousand dollars for.
Twenty feet, it's twenty feet wide, and as deep as the building is, um, I can't remember, can't remember how, it's, it's at least a hundred feet deep, it's probably more than that, it's probably a hundred fifty feet deep, it's probably twenty, twenty by a hundred fifty? That's probably right.
Three hundred square feet.
Pardon?
Three thousand square feet.
Yeah, that would be.
And we had an appraisal down on that property.
We did, and the appraisal came in about double what we were, what we negotiated to.
Cool, okay. Looked like a big number till you said that.
There's, there's a building line, there's a functioning building, and, you know, with a tenant, and it.
Sergeant Wilson, here's the property.
Oh, there we go.
I thought you were waiting to arrest.
It's my building, I own both from Quattle Bombs all the way down to the shoe store, and so we're going to tear down those, and then I'm going to rebuild the Quattle Bombs as a little nicer building. But I've been waiting on this, so we can get this over. Yeah, I just wanted, yeah, he's been wonderful to work with, and I'd like to thank him for this.
And, uh, next item is an ordinance approving the bid and appropriating funds for the Tyler Street improvements for the Transportation Department, and this is more than seven feet or deeper, so I'm going to let you talk about this.
Thank you, we would like you to approve the lowest bid for Tyler Street on the face two from Gatlin Park to Washington.
Who's your bidder?
Rogers. You can see, we only received one bid, um, I had a pretty big vendor's list for that, so, um, we, but we only received one bid, and it came in under the engineer's estimate, so we, we didn't have confidence in the bid, only, even though there was only one. I make a motion to raise the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion of second, we need the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption and the market's across.
Second.
We have a motion of second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause, any further discussion? Engineer's estimate was done by?
Our engineering department.
Finley did, okay. This is page one, when they complete this, they'll start page two, so actually we've got Tyler from Washington all the way coming in, and it'll be sidewalk from, uh, Washington to Gatlin Park. It'll be pretty nice.
And if anybody's curious what our plans look like, they are on our website, under completed projects, it's called Tyler Street of Projects, it's project number eighteen dash one twenty-five.
And that was ordinance O sixty-four.
It is, um, two pages.
Yeah, the prices for both pages.
Right.
Little questions? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Any emergency clause? Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Six to zero. Are you taking care of that? Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Last one on this particular portion, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at thirty-seven twenty-five College Avenue from O one to a P U D, and, let's see, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on, I don't remember the date on this, June eighteenth of this year, and, uh, the time the Planning Commission wrote it six to one to send this to City Council with the recommendation of approval, there are some conditions, uh, limited to an animal clinic, arena, stable, veterinarian clinic, animal hospital, kennel, equine rehabilitation, fitness and therapy, and live events, and a restaurant. Also, live events must be concluded by eleven, outdoor sound system usage must cease by eight, restaurant opens ceases by eleven, no drive-throughs, excluding permitted uses include general office. Flying road and shock loop will not be used for event traffic or moving animals or materials onto the site, and the City Council should have the authority to review and alter the P U D zoning if significant and verifiable complaints concerning the external impacts of the use are made and left uncorrected, we have had an issue with this property impacts.
Yes, yes, we have.
Yes, yeah, so this is the, uh, no, no.
Previous ownership.
Yes, yes, yes. It was Back Acres Ranch, uh, with legends, uh, planning staff became aware, uh, that the site had been occupied, the nature of the conditional use that was approved previously was tied to the ownership, and so when that changed, uh, we notified the owner earlier this year that, you know, things are out of compliance, uh, in meeting with them and reviewing the zoning code, we determined that some of the activities that, for which the, the building is designed, it's, it's designed for horses and large animals and cattle, uh, and so we wanted to create a situation, we didn't think in their current zoning that they, they would be allowed to do everything, uh, that, that it's designed to do. In addition, we felt like going through the P U D process and working with them would be the best to place conditions, uh, that would allow us, uh, to make sure that it didn't create impacts on the U T S property, that's, that's ultimately what we were most concerned about. Uh, we've, we've worked, Landon Sanders here is, is a here to represent the applicant, we've worked with them, they've been great to work with on this, you know, we've got provisions in there that, uh, if we've got complaints that, uh, violations of the P U D that are left uncorrected, that we can bring back to the council, y'all reserve that right anyway, uh, but we wanted to make that clear, and so, we feel like this is a good opportunity to just clear up the whole situation, make it work for everybody.
Start fresh.
Start fresh.
Are these, are these times the same times that were put on the other votes?
I think it's earlier. I don't know, it's earlier to me.
About eight o'clock in the.
I, I don't know, for some reason I wouldn't say eleven, because I would get a phone call from people with the cross street.
And after it was just by eight.
All the time. I don't remember that either.
That was mostly the parties and stuff that was happening adjacent to the restaurant.
In, in working with the applicant, they, they've said that the activities that were occurring there previously in the property are not what they're, uh, so there's a, the Southwest Vet Clinic, which is being operated there, they've got some horse lanes that are going on there, so, they, they don't have an intent of establishing a, a restaurant in, uh, they've, they've talked about getting things like birthday parties in that location, uh, but they wanted to reserve that right just in case because it had been previously done, so.
It's tied to it.
It's more closed in, too, now, I think it was.
Is it tied just to the applicant, if I, for some reason, maybe?
Uh, so this, this would be regardless, regardless of the owner, um, conditions would apply on the site wherever else. At the, at the planning commission meeting, uh, we, we have not really received a lot of, uh, concern, calls, uh, we had one person, uh, show up to speak and support the applicant, just to make elaborate.
So the people living in Taylor Park across the road were notified?
Yes.
And the neighborhood on Shockwood, I guess, went in as well.
Yeah, when we had our, our initial informational meeting, uh, there was concern raised about vehicles using, the, the use using that road, uh, it's, uh, sort of a difficult position for them, and so the applicant agreed that, uh, for their events or loading anything, uh, that they wouldn't be using that.
That day before, and it was a lot of.
Are you the property owner?
No, sir, I'm Landon Sanders, I'm here on behalf of property owner, and I can answer any questions you guys have.
Got any questions?
Landon's got to be to work with, he's also has some dedication of property to improve the craft, and so he's really involved in his property issues.
I make a motion, we plant this request.
Second.
We have a motion of second, wait for your reading.
Yeah, I think it's a little.
Yeah, we need a motion to wait for your reading.
Raise the three readings.
Motion of second, wait for your reading, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion of second, we need the three readings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. Question?
Yes, sir.
Chief, is there a way to measure someone who might be under the influence, uh, if they're driving down the road, and maybe they're driving a little slow, or whistling too loud, or whatever it is, they might have to do?
There's, there's prosecution side. If you want to. So, uh, yes, there is, and basically, um, you know, our, our officers are trained to detect them, and whatever that may be, pills, marijuana, alcohol, alcohol is quite a bit easier to prosecute, because we've got a P A C machine, and then eventually what we can do if they refuse that, you know, a search warrant, you get a mandatory blood draw from them, we can be able to test a, a quantitative amount, um, of alcohol in the blood. We can also test if we do a blood draw for, uh, other substances, and of course, if we go in down the investigative route, you can request a urine sample, things like that. It's a little bit different, I don't want to get into too many, you know, too far off the lead, but it's a little bit different because, uh, someone that consistently uses marijuana, even if they're not under the influence, will show up in the test, and so then it goes beyond what's in their blood or in their urine, and it goes into what's called the drug recognition expert, okay, and so then they have specially trained officers who will determine based on a series of scientific tests whether or not they're impaired at the time that they were operating the vehicle. There's also the clues, too, obviously, the D C for the stop, you know, were they swerving, were they, uh, they didn't have their headlights on, or they slurred speech, um, you know, then, of course, their, their affect, um, facial expressions, things like that, they're, they're going to be looking for. But with medical marijuana, from what we've seen in other places around the country, this seems to be the number one thing is impaired driving, um, so we, we're going to prosecute this heavily. This doesn't have anything to do with that. All this is right here, if someone is, has, has a valid, uh, card to go to dispensary approved by the state, purchase marijuana, because they have a certain qualifying medical condition, if they happen to possess or use that marijuana outside the protections of the amendment, then we can issue them a citation instead of arresting them and booking them in, and whatever else goes along with, you know, criminal record and all that. This gives another option to officers. Um, as far as impaired driving, Miles, in particular, I can tell you, will still zealously prosecute those, that is something that we cannot allow, or allow, you know, any, there's,